Good evening, everyone. We welcome the Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session Tuesday, January 12th, 2015. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Hodges.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you. Moving on to the invocation. Mr. Johnson.
I would like to have a moment of silence as we enter into the year 2016. I want to wish well wishes for all of our residents as we move into this year. I'm hoping that we have a nice, safe year. And I also want to put into everyone's head to keep the Potts family in prayer as they go through their time of tough times right now. So can we have a moment of silence for that, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Majors pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. And good evening to everyone and Happy New Year. And I hope everyone has a blessed and prosperous New Year. I'm moving on to communications. We have none this evening. But before I do that, I would like to make an announcement that we had an executive session on January 4th in the City Council's office to discuss legal matters, and that was with our three new council members. Also want to address the committee assignments for the year 2016, 2017. Administration Committee Chair, myself. Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Ben Allitt, Mr. Jeffrey Baltimore, and Mr. Westburne Majors are members. Building and Housing Committee, Ms. Shemaine Daniels is the chair. Ms. Destiny Hodges and Ben Allitt are members. Community Economic Development, Jeffrey Baltimore, the chair. Shemaine Daniels and Cornelius Johnson are members. Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee, Destiny Hodges is the chair. Cornelius Johnson and Jeffrey Baltimore are members. Public Safety Committee, Cornelius Johnson is the chair. Westburne Majors and Ben Allitt, members. Public Works Committee, Westburne Majors is the chair. Shemaine Daniels and Destiny Hodges are members. And please note that the President is an ex-official member of all of these committees. Thank you. Council members, please put away all your electronic devices. And before we begin, I just want to say welcome to our new three elected council members, and a return of Mr. Jeffrey Baltimore as our council member, Mr. Westburne Majors, Mr. Cornelius Johnson, and Ms. Destiny Hodges. Welcome to all of you. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, anyone who would like to address the council at this time, I will start to my right. Please come to the mic now, please.
Council members, my name is Tim Ziegler. I reside at 226 Charles Street in the city. I've been a resident in the city since 1980. I bought the property at 226 Charles Street in 1991. On May the 7th of 2015, I filed a complaint with the Code's Office when a fence and two gates were erected across the sidewalk into my home. It is the only access to and from my property. Just as a little bit of a background, this was a project that was with the redevelopment authority. The plan was approved in 1983 by the City Engineer, City Planning Commission, Dolphin County Planning Commission. And a special note on that plan, provided that the sidewalk, which is now blocked by two gates, was a common-use sidewalk. There's five properties impacted by the erection of these gates. All those deeds have easements in the deed. I am most impacted because it's the only sidewalk to and from the front of my home. When the gates were put up, you can no longer see my front door. You can no longer see my house number. I'm totally secluded behind these gates. On June 2nd, Mr. Patz, Spatz, I believe it is.
Mr. Patton.
Sent a certified letter directing that the gates be removed within 30 days. I believe that the resident of 228, that's the residency that put the gates up, filed an objection to the removal of the gates. I've been told, I've been working with Ann Montgomery in the Code's Office. She's been very responsive. We've exchanged all sorts of emails, had a couple of telephone calls. She told me that when the objection to the order to remove the gates was filed with the city, it went to the city's law bureau, and it has languished there since sometime in July. This is a matter of personal safety to myself and my property. It's the only way in and out. I've had free and unimpeded access to my property since I bought it in 1991. I can't tell you the motivation behind why the gates went up. Grandma used to call it a spite fence. There doesn't seem to be any practical purpose for it. I'd like a resolution to the matter. I did in my last email to Ms. Montgomery, ask for a copy of the objection that the residents at 228 filed to the order. I never got a response to that. That's where we stand. Again, with winter approaching, the first snow, if the gates closed overnight, and we get any accumulation of snowfall, if he doesn't have the precognition to go out and open the gate, I'm going to be trapped in my home. I won't be able to get the gate open to leave my house, my property. So it's really not just an infringement of property right, it's not just a defiance of city order, it's really a matter of personal safety and the safety of my property. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Ziegler. And please just wait till the end of the meeting and meet with Mr. Johnson, who is our new Chair of Public Safety. He will be more than happy to discuss the situation with you.
All right. Thank you very much.
No, Code's is under Public Safety.
Thank you.
Code's is under Public Safety. You're welcome, Mr. Ziegler.
Good evening. My name is Louis Butts. I am the current sitting committee man for this ward here. I come for a resolution also. We can maybe call it the Camp Curtain Hollow Grounds Resolution. It doesn't cost anything. It's just a form that, a resolution we bring out, and we say that Camp Curtain did exist, that people died here, our Civil War heritage, and that would enable us to be added into other touring agents. The Camp Curtain Hollow Ground designation is something that we have to give ourselves. Camp Curtain was a historical encampment. Camp Curtain, it was the greatest and largest retirement in the Civil War. We won the Civil War. I want a resolution that states the bounds of Camp Curtain, and the reasons why Camp Curtain was so important to freedom. I hope you all will go and do a little bit of research about your history, about humanity, and being better, and showing worth. It's a great story that we have. I want a resolution stating that and displayed to the people of Harrisburg that says, yes, this is our landmark, this is our history, we must grab a wit and we must be truthful about. We will all learn a lot. This resolution would enable us to enter our city into a nation, a nationwide hollow ground trail, which currently stops in Gettysburg, but we could expand it up to Harrisburg because we have worth, and we have lots of worth. So as a team, as a group, as a family, as a village, we must stand up for what is right and for what is real. So if we can work on a resolution, I'll show you the historical meets and bounds and some of others, and it can go to the board, the House, and to the public. And let's have a public meeting to display this, to show everyone that it is worth the paper that it is written upon. Okay? Just out of pr- free, this is just for us, this is a freebie. But this will lay the groundwork for the legacy. Okay? It's not called, hey, I'll put the, my point, I'll do the legwork because I know what it is. I don't know exactly what it is, and I love you all. Happy New Year, you're looking great. You're looking great, and we got a job to do. And that could be one of your first jobs. I love y'all, and you know it, right?
Mr. Butts, submit the information.
I will submit, and we're going to work on it, all right?
Thank you. Anyone else to my right?
Good evening, Honorable City Council. My name is Ron Chapel, 660 Both Street, Harrisburg. First, I want to salute Mr. Butts for his proposed resolution, and I support it wholeheartedly. I just want to welcome the new council members, and also the returning council member Jeff Baltimore. And I want to thank you for your first good decision in that selecting, re-electing Honorable Wanda Williams as the council president, and council member Shemaine Daniels as the vice president. I feel good for you all, and I know that the city is directly behind you, and I know that you'll be an inspiration to the young folks of Harrisburg. So best wishes and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel. Anyone else to my right?
Hi, my name's Samantha. I live in Midtown, and I'm a member of The Stops Today Harrisburg. We're an action-oriented social justice organization, and we've been working on police accountability in the city since the winter of 2014. We've hosted community meetings, organized and supported local protests, and developed a Citizens Complaint Review Board proposal, which is still in process, but we have hundreds of petition supporters. So at the start of the new year, we just wanted to share our hopes to work with you and the police force on some accountability agreements in light of national and regional events. We acknowledge and respect the police for their contract sacrifices in the recent past, pay freeze, healthcare charges, but we believe some changes either to the contract, city legislation, or other written policies will build greater trust between police and residents. Things like accepting and investigating anonymous complaints, not just notarized ones, making complaint forms available online, if they're not currently, and at neighborhood establishments like places of worship and social service agencies. Producing a yearly complaints report in accordance with city code adopted in 1987. Conducting police trainings focused on emotional self-regulation, how to communicate with people experiencing mental illness, and safe conflict de-escalation. Ensuring that complaints remain on an officer's record, not that they're purged after X amount of time. And potentially restoring city residency requirements over time. We want to support the efforts of our police to make the city safe and fair, and we look forward to meeting with the Public Safety Committee to talk further as you've requested. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my right?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Watkins, and I live on Kensington Street in Harrisburg. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a friend of mine who works two jobs and cannot be here. She lives on Penn Street, and she has an issue concerning the trash cans. She would like to know why the trash cans are not being placed in the rear of the homes, and they're all in the front of the homes, and she says it's very much an eyesore on her block.
Do you have her name? And I would ask that you meet with Mr. Majors. He is now our new Public Works Committee Chair.
Wonderful. I will do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else to my right, please? Anyone in the middle, please? Please come to the mic.
Yes, my name is Keith Lawson. Most everybody know me. 209 South 17th Street in Harrisburg. I'm glad we got new council members because I got a complaint about council, right? And this is from all the young people in the neighborhood. Not one time have they seen a council member at Fourth and Emerald. Not one time have they seen a council member at 14th and Thompson. Not one time have they seen one at Seneca and Rio. Not one time have they seen them on the south side, right? Except when it's time to get voted, everybody's all over the place, right? But when they need help, they need to help clean their neighborhoods up, none of y'all show up, right? So what I'm doing, I'm going to bring about 40, 50 young people down here, right, and let them tell you how they feel, right? You're never going to stop the shootings until y'all address the issues. They cannot get a job, they cannot get anything with a criminal record. But yet, when they out the halfway house or out the prison, they can work for the city, they can work for the commissioners over at the courthouse, and they can work for all the nonprofits in the city that they don't get paid for, but they got a criminal record. Then when they get out, they can get a job because they got a criminal record.
Okay.
Right? Wanda, I asked you a question a couple weeks ago, month, whatever, right? I haven't got no answer yet. I haven't even got any service about it yet. I talked to the law bureau, haven't got an answer yet.
Okay.
Right? This is an ongoing issue where a lot of people asking questions and never getting an answer. It's always, okay, I'll see you after the meeting, I'll talk to you, and it's big wash-off.
Well, let me just say this to you, Mr. Lawson. You are incorrect. I advise you to talk to Mr.
Ain't got nowhere. Ain't got nowhere.
Well, I'm sorry that you didn't get anywhere, but you never.
Okay. But I'm not the only one that's not getting nowhere.
I'm not going to be able to debate with you, and nor am I going to allow you to stand up here and say that this council member do not respond to you.
Okay. I knew that was coming. Well, the thing about it, I grew up in this community, I had a business in this community. I hired a lot of people that had criminal records and drug problems, right? Until y'all address these issues, there's going to be more killings and more people dying because they have nothing to do. If you go in them areas I just told you about, you'll see young people just hanging out, just hanging out doing nothing, right? And the quickest way, they can start shooting people. They got more guns than the cops got, and they get more and more every day, right? Until we address that issue as far as the mayor, council, the police department, and all of these, it's going to get worse, right? A lot of them want to get out of that, they want to get a job, but every time they go for a job, the criminal record comes back up on them, so they can't get a job. So then that's all they do is hang out. These guys are arguing over, you stepped on my sneakers, or 50 cent. I mean, it's just terrible. You know, you can have all the Stop the Violence meetings you want, until you get on the streets and start doing something and helping them, it's never going to get better. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson, please, we welcome to come down. You can bring the individual young men down here, we're welcome to meet with them.
Okay.
So whenever you want to set that up, and all you have to do is arrange it with Mr. Petrowski, he is our city clerk.
Okay.
Anyone else in the middle, please?
Good evening. I'm Daniel, I'm Daniel D. Graham, 217 North Second Street here in Harrisburg. Okay. First, I welcome, congratulate the new members of City Council. Westburne Majors and Destiny Hodges, and the, who's the other?
Cornelius Johnson.
What?
Mr. Cornelius Johnson.
Mr.?
Cornelius Johnson.
Cornelius Johnson. Okay, welcome to the City Council, and congratulations to Council President Wanda Williams for being re-elected.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to each one of you. My first issue is that I am happy to see that the City Council and the mayor is in the process of hiring at least five new police officers, thanks to a federal grant of money. That is good, and also, I presume some new firefighters being hired? That is good, yes. I say hire as many police officers and firefighters as the budget allows. We need more police and more firefighters. And more police patrols on Second Street and other areas of Harrisburg, especially Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, and every day and every night, more police patrols all over the city. And if necessary, call in the Capitol Police and the State Police to patrol the city, and the Army National Guard also, if necessary. And each one of us should support the police. The police officers doing a great job protecting each one of us from the hoodlums and thugs out there. We need to stop the crimes, stop the shootings, and stop the tragedies. And one way to do that is more, having police patrols is a deterrent to crime. So again, let's put more police officers on the streets, every day and every night. I'm glad to see there are some officers patrolling here downtown, but we need more. So thank you for your efforts there, and again, again, let us each one of us support the police in their work. Sometimes police officers have to make split-second decisions. So again, the police are doing a great job protecting us. And another issue is transportation. As I said before, we need more local bus service on the streets here in the city, weekdays and Saturdays and Sundays, and more passenger rail service. Yes, we do have good passenger train service on the main Amtrak line going across Pennsylvania from Harrisburg east to Lancaster and Philadelphia, New York City. And going west from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh, there's just the one train a day. It's a good train, a beautiful, thrilling ride, but we need more trains, especially on the line from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh. A train going in the morning from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh and returning in the late afternoon and evening from Pittsburgh back to Harrisburg, so that a passenger could make the round trip by Amtrak train from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh in one day. Yes, but, and, yes, again, we do have good Amtrak passenger train service on the main Amtrak line coming across Pennsylvania, as I said. Praise God. Yes. Praise God. But we need more trains and more passenger trains on other present rail routes, which are not now used by passenger trains. And also a regional commuter passenger train system using existing tracks on many rail routes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graham.
And I believe there is a market, and I believe a good number of people would ride, putting more trains in service. Many people do ride Amtrak passenger trains as it is now, but again, we need to expand the passenger rail service for the benefit of everyone. Thank you much, God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Right or left?
Pardon me?
Right or left?
I'm in the middle, but if you wait a minute, let's, we'll do the middle, and I'll let you speak afterwards.
Good.
I won't look back.
Hello, my name's Clark Nicholson. I'm artistic director of Gamut Theater on 15 North Fourth Street. I wanted to come real quick before rehearsal tonight and while some classes are going on over at Gamut, to thank you guys so much for all the help that you gave us getting into our home. We've been there just over two months now. Things have gone well. We opened in November with 12th Night, the largest houses we've ever had, the highest grossing shows we've ever done. It's going terrific. We have a world-class facility. I'm going to brag on my wife a little bit, who's the executive director, Melissa Nicholson of Gamut Theater, and has been elected the vice president of the Shakespeare Theater Association International, which covers Shakespeare theaters throughout around the globe. And we're going to represent Harrisburg and Notre Dame in about two weeks.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. But what I wanted to tell you about real quick before we get started is, so we started off with the Shakespeare Show 12th Night, but the next show we're doing is of great significance. The fact that we have the rights to do it is very, very significant. We're doing a play called Red Velvet by Lolita Chakrabarti. This show ran on the west end of London for a couple years, 2012 and 2013. After that, the rights were very difficult to get. The only companies in this country that have the rights for this are Shakespeare and Company up in Lenox, Massachusetts, and us. And we're doing this story, it's a very significant story about an actor named Ira Aldridge. Ira Aldridge was a Shakespearean classical actor. He was a son of a slave. He worked in the African Grove Theater Company, which was an all-classical theater company in 1830s Manhattan. He then crossed the ocean over to Europe and became a star of the British stage and had a 40-year career there and is this day buried in Luds, Poland. And it is a very significant story, an amazing story, that not many people know about, and so we wanted people to know a lot about it, and we hope you all will come out. I actually brought the actor who's going to play Ira Aldridge, who is not from Harrisburg, he's from Orlando, but he wanted to say hello to you all. This is Mr. Tony Golden.
Yeah, hi, guys. I'm from Orlando, Florida. I'm very honored to be a part of Harrisburg. It's a very small city, and I love it. Very cozy, very different than what I'm used to. Yeah, I graduated from Boston University in 2014 with a BFA in acting, also with sort of concentration in African-American activism and stuff like that. So I feel like this show is very important because Ira Aldridge, to me, is not just an African-American hero, but just a national hero, and international hero that I think people should learn about, talking about this community and talking about what I've learned about this community. It feels like this is a show that will bring out the young African-American men and showing them what things, what we can do to, well, that we are more than our certain societies have put on us. So I just want to say that this show has been an honor for me to play this man. If you know his struggle, if you don't, come see the show. But if you know his struggle, this is just a story that really talks about a man who's been through the trials and through everything, and just how he's come out on top. It really is a hero's story. So if you have time, please come and see it. We really love that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, congratulations, and we certainly will be available, and thank you for the complimentary tickets to the show. We certainly will look forward to coming to that show. Could you please, for the public's sake, do you have a website that you would like to put out there for the public?
It's Gamut Theater.
Would you come to the mic for me, please?
That's right.
Okay.
It's gamuttheater.org, so G-A-M-U-T theater with an R-E dot org. You can also just search theater in Harrisburg, and it'll come up there.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in the middle, please? Mr. Boyd, you may go next.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'm an advocate for the homeless and also some of the other people that refuse to come to... to this sort of thing this evening. It is a great thing to always talk about the arts. I love that. But before we talk about the arts, we need to walk across this city, especially the north, the south, and other parts of this city, and look at the disadvantage. I can't clap, I can't feel happy about people when we come and we talk about doing a show. We have one of the greatest shows that's ever could be told, just maybe 15 feet from here, a show that needs to be told. If we want to talk about art, that's one thing. I've asked this administration, and I've also asked this council numerous times, what are you going to do about the homeless? What are you going to do, once again, about the homeless? It is great, once again, to come in this chamber when I have heard numerous times that we will hold the nonprofits accountable. So I circle this room here, and I look, and I look at the ones that will not even look my way, but we will think about that. What about the people on South 14th Street that were told, "We are going to do the best. We will do that for you. We will help that, and we will be part of that." They refuse to come here. The ones that I've just talked to an hour ago says, "Mr. Boyd, they're not gonna do anything for us." I look at the Honorable Madam President, and I say, once again, I am really, really, really disgusted. Honorable Mayor, I can also say this to you, and I'm saying this with earnest, I helped within your election to make you mayor of this great city, and I am disappointed in you. The only people that are making it in this great city are the elite, the elite. I've asked many times about the Broad Street Market with errors that were like this. Now we have a new council. So now I look into their faces, and I'm gonna say, where they sold your people, once again, directly across the street, where we have asked this administration to move those plaques across the street to the Broad Street Market, and I still have deafening ears. All I say, once again, we come from a beautiful city, a proud city. I have family roots here within this city, but my people that are related to me are saying this, we are disgusted. So why do we even want to vote? Why do we even want to talk to them? And why are we continuously with someone that doesn't even care about the interest of the other three-quarters of this city? Honorable Mayor, once again, when a man walks up to you by your bookstore, and this Honorable Mayor looks at you and looks again at you and crosses the street like he doesn't see you, that means a lot to the populace of this great city. But once again, I would like to say this, we have a new year, and I'd like to find out who is gonna be the one that will be the office of accountability. Midtown looks beautiful, but the people on 14th Street, what are we going to do? Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. And certainly, if you attend the meetings, you would understand and know what this administration is doing for the people on 14th Street, and I suggest that you do that, sir. And also, to address your concerns about the homeless, this council each year provides money to nonprofit agency for the homeless. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Please, please do so, because, please do so. I'll have you removed. Please do so. Okay. Okay. But you don't want to hear the explanation when you can stand up there and accuse this council and the mayor of not doing anything for the homeless. Okay? And I'm giving you an explanation you don't want to hear. And also, to address the 14th Street, it's more to it than you can even imagine.
Well, if you think about it, that honorable, honorable.
Please come to the meetings, and you'll find out all the information you want.
Oh, I've been to all the meetings.
No, you haven't.
That's the thing.
Okay, I'm done, and you're done.
I know, you're done.
Okay, so if you're finished, I will have you removed if you're not quiet. You gave your response, and I'm addressing those issues. You don't want to hear what I have to say. If you don't want to hear what I have to say, then I will have you removed. But this administration and this council makes adjustments for the homeless.
Okay. He doesn't know the law. Have a good evening.
Moving on.
Still loving your family, boy.
Thank you for loving me. Moving on, is anyone else in the middle, please? Anyone else to my left? Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session minutes of December 15th, 2015. Council's members, have you had an opportunity to look over those minutes for any omission, deletions, or corrections? If so, minutes stand as approved. Moving on to reports of committees we haven't done this evening. We're moving on to ordinance for first reading, which is reopening of the budget, Bill One of 2016. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Bill One of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the year, of the city of Harrisburg for the year 2016.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Bill Two of 2016.
Bill Two of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg, Title Five, Licensing and Taxation, Part Five, Real Estate Taxes, Chapter Five dash 501, Property Tax, by establishing for the year 2016, a tax levy on land, and improvements in providing for the distribution of taxes levied and assessed, and providing for a tax rebate for the difference between the tax due and attributable to the year 2016 tax levy over the tax due and attributable to the year 2006 tax levy for qualifying senior citizens.
That also will be placed in Budget and Finance. Moving on to ordinance for amendment. We have none this evening, and we move on to ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution One of 2016.
Resolution One of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution appointing Mr. Bill McAvoy to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the city of Harrisburg.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution Two of 2016.
Resolution Two of 2016 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying a professional services contract with Simplex Grinnell LP or Simplex to provide emergency repairs of the fire sprinkler system in the government center.
Council members, are there any questions or concerns about Resolution Two? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution Two of 2016 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Three of 2016.
Resolution Three of 2016 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution approving a purchase agreement with Pierce Manufacturing for the purchase of a 2017 Pierce Enforcer 500-gallon custom pumper fire truck for $504,974, with a prepaid discount of $24,008 if the contract price is paid in full within 30 days.
Yes. Council members, would you like me to suspend the ruse if you have additional questions or comments?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to suspend the ruse. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll open up for questions.
Mr. Grover, could you provide an explanation for the public on why we're doing this?
Certainly. This resolution is for the purchase of a fire truck that is custom-made. They build it to spec. At the moment, the fire chief has advised us that if we lock in the price, the city saves $24,008 on the price of $504,974. The, we're moving this forward now because in the processing of checks and the processing of check runs in the city, if this was put to committee and came back for a vote, essentially we would lose the discount rate. And I will note that the money has already been allocated by the council in the budget, and that there is a matching fund coming from the Harrisburg Firemen's Relief Association of the state of Pennsylvania, and it is our understanding they vote tomorrow, and, which is, they receive funds for the very purpose of assisting fire companies with the purchase of equipment. And we have had great success with them in the past in matching for other purchases of the department.
And it's to my understanding that this is, we go into station number two, replacing 1997 wagon that we have there?
That is my understanding from being told. I actually don't know what it's replacing.
I believe that's what the chief of edil line told the council.
Yes.
Only concern that I'm going to probably ask for amendment to be made to it, to make sure that it's contingent upon the approval of the Harrisburg Fireman's Relief Association for their matching half.
And that seems very prudent.
Okay, before we do the motion for the amendment, are there any other questions regarding Resolution Three? Okay, you've made a motion. They're properly moved, second?
We have to go back.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, we were out of session. Motion to go back in session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Johnson, would you do your motion?
I would like to make a motion to amend the Resolution Three to add the following, whereas the approval of this agreement is conditional upon the award of matching funds by the Harrisburg Firemen's Relief Association of the state of Pennsylvania.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comment on the motion? Let's call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The amendment carries.
Now, moving on to Resolution Three as amended.
Calling for the vote for Resolution Three as amended. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution Three as amended passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Four, 2016.
Resolution Four of 2016 was moved by Mr. Majors, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of an application to the Commonwealth's Department of Environmental Protection for the purposes of purchasing two automated leaf collectors.
That will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution Five.
Resolution Five of 2016 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final land development plan and lot consolidation plan submitted by Scott Soso of Harrisburg Properties Associates to consolidate six lots at 838 South 20th Street, 825 Hudson Street, 835 Hudson Street, 840 Hudson Street, 851 South 19th Street, and develop an approximately 15,000-square-foot adult daycare facility on site.
That will be placed in Community Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution Six.
Resolution Six of 2016 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution accepting the first annual report of the roll forward of encumbered 2015 budget commitments.
And that will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to O Business. Council members, are there any O Business tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to New Business. Mr. Grover, could you come here for a minute, please? Before we move on to New Business. Moving on to New Business. Council members, is there any new business this evening?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start with Mr. Baltimore.
There'll be a Community and Economic Development meeting February 4, 5:30.
Mr. Majors, any?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Daniels? Mr. Johnson?
I just want to make two quick announcements. One is, on MLK Day, Monday, January 18, Urban Connection will be hosting a career fair across the street. It's access and opportunity, where there'll be over 20 companies in the area that will be hiring at this career fair. So I encourage all city residents who are looking for employment opportunity to attend. I believe this event starts at 10:30. And this is an annual event that's put on by Ms. Vera Cornish. So it's a great opportunity where people can come downtown, it's free parking, and they can have a chance to talk with employers about access and opportunities for employment. And I also want to make an announcement that going on in Kim Curtin YMCA on Friday nights, they do have a youth basketball league that's going up there. It's called Jump Shots and Not Gunshots. I wanted to put that out to the public so everyone is aware as recreational activities for our youth inside the city of Harrisburg. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Allen?
Yes, we'll be having the Budget and Finance meeting to discuss the reopening of the budget, and that will be on Thursday, January 28, at 5:30 here in council chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges.
Not at this time.
Thank you. The Administration Committee will be holding a meeting on Thursday, January 21, at 5:30 PM, and is to discuss the proposed amendments to the Strong Plan as well as the LST. And I would like to announce that we have a new health officer here in the city of Harrisburg. Her name is Nelva Wright. Welcome, Ms. Wright. And also, we have a new assistant solicitor in the city of Harrisburg, Rebecca Conkle. Welcome, Ms. Conkle.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Also, Tri-County Community Action will have an MLK Day of Service, Monday, January 18, from 8:30 AM to 1 PM. It's at the Harrisburg First Church of the Brethren. It's at 219 Hummel Street in Harrisburg. Registration begins at 8:30 with a light breakfast, and lunch will be provided. For more information or to register, please go to www.centralpa.mlkday.org/volunteer. Our call duly at Tri-County Community Action Center, 232-9757, extension 105. Everyone is welcome. Hearing no other new business, may I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved, and second, meeting is officially adjourned.